Bado. Erickson.
Yeah.
Lambert, here. Minn.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
May.
Present.
Okay, that brings us to the next item, which is to consider the adoption of the continuity of operations plan.
Well, I'm going to start us out, but Tim Holmes will speak the authority of this. But just to start out, so the city administrator, all the department heads and all have put it several meetings to discuss the creation of our continuity of operations plan. And really, the point of this plan is critical operations if an emergency disaster causes normal operations. The COOP really outlines procedures to be able to continue the performance of the social government functions and services when all normal operations become disrupted, overwhelmed, or in possible use of hazards. We really looked at the COOP as kind of our umbrella and what this does as kind of overarching for the city when it comes to any kind of disaster, or in this case pandemic, but a natural disaster would be covered under this COOP. With that, Mr. Chair, I can throw it over to Tim Holmes.
So I think I heard most of that. It was a good overview of what the COOP is. The plan is just the continuity of the government, the city. We worked diligently with all the department heads, BPU, and we were able to develop this plan. It's taken from a template from the emergency managers in the state. The plan was reviewed by Mr. Lango, and we feel that, as Jennifer mentioned, it's an overarching document that just really gives us guidance and something to fall back on in a situation similar to what we're in right now. The plan outlays the preparation that we're doing, the activity associated with the disaster or emergency that we're in, and then the efforts to get back to normal or the recovery side of an emergency. It also lays out mission-critical employees or positions within the organization, and again, just gives us that guidance as to what we need to do if this plan needs to be implemented as we're recommending it is now.
Okay, so I have an opportunity to hit this after. I was quite impressed with how thorough it was and how well it was put together, given what seemed like a rather tight timeline. So I want to, you know, commend the department heads and Tim and all of Richard for helping out to put this together. Anybody have questions or comments? Mayor.
Page ten. This is one of my points. I might change. Maybe Avian, who has on page number three. A couple of things there that passed. One said, "Avidity Jenny." Page ten, item number three. Left hand, "Very limited human to human rare traffic." That was there, and on the other side, right-hand side, also Avian flu. That was several years ago.
Yeah. Would you like to... Or just remove Avian?
So that table is from the state of Minnesota, just referencing services and their delivery to the events of pandemic. It's just kind of an example of the preparedness side of the document. It gives examples of their response. It's going to be... Here at all with... Just questioning that word.
Pathogenic or something like that. Taking reference to Avian out of there. Clean it up so in the future, we don't have trouble checking.
So I think that's just...
Did you just put contagion in?
Contagion instead of Avian flu?
That's just a minor thing. Cover anything that comes to mouth.
John.
I'm not meaning to interrupt. They can't hear. Out of the room. Yeah, we're fully in here in the middle. Walk up. Our closer microphone is down. They can't hear.
Okay, new rules for the people in the room here. When you need to speak, you're going to have to... I'll move. You can come stand here.
Put it in the middle or something. Hold that corner one out.
What are we?
No, you're fine right there. My laptop's black. So everybody who's more than 20 feet away, closer with the top. Just here if we need to. Yeah, can we recap that, please?
Okay, so Minnesota Responds, page three. On page 10 of the COOP, "No or very limited human transmission or Avian influenza, highly pathogenic, page five, N1." There is proposing we just take broader frames out of it to say, "Highly pathogenic" agent.
I only consider that as this state's goal and their explanation of what they're going to look at. That would be my only concern, changing there.
Can they hear me from here by project?
This is Dave.
I'm the only other.
If we leave it as it is, it basically says, "No or very limited human to human transmission," which would cover everything, or Avian flu. So we wouldn't be missing out anything if we left the language.
I have a question on page 16. This is Lambert. Here. Who will be the government...
Government officer?
Chief Government Officer. That's the 18. I'm sorry. These are actually, who are they within our state? A community emergency manager. Who would we identify as being those?
So Alderman Lambert has a question about who would be the chief administrative officer in...
Chief Government Officer.
Chief Government Officer in the continuity of operations plan.
Well, my response, that would be the city administrator is given those responsibilities on a day-to-day basis. So it would be her unless she was unavailable. And then on page 17, it's the transition plan. So if Administrator Bergman was unavailable, it would go to Finance Director. She was unavailable, it would go to... That follows the order of questions for our host.
I guess my concern of this, Lambert, again, is it's not a term yet. Huge. I can't find sentence right now. This is page...
This section also identifies which authorities can and should delegate and their roles along with the position and predecessors, all the way down, city administrator, fire chief.
The city council announced it will be adjusting to these social distancing times to continue working for the city. The council has been working with its IT department, create a way to continue meeting online.
Yes, I understand. The reasoning behind that is... That's the one hundred and fifty-five.
We're going to have, the public will be able to log in and watch. Each of the council members and department heads will be able to log in from home and just handle our limited business for the time being remotely to practice, you know, safe social distancing.
So, Lambert, you're recommending that under nine A, we change the title from Chief Government Officer to something else.
Yeah, or identify on page 17, position, or says city administrator, that is going to be the government officer. This will be if you're... Identify accordingly.
So Alderman Lambert is referencing page six of the continuity of operations plan, where it says the responsibility is Chief Government Officer, Emergency Management Director, and so on. And what I think I hear the recommendation is, is that we associate each title with one of those columns.
Page ten.
Sixteen.
Eighteen.
Sixteen and seven.
On eighteen, page eighteen, number nine, responsibility.
Page eighteen is...
So the only one that would need to be changed is the...
The rest of the stuff, yeah. I think...
The rest of them are already... Chief Government Officer slash City Administrator.
Make those changes.
Chief Holmes said he would make those changes.
Alderman, Stunek, Erickson, Bevins, do you have any questions about this plan?
I think the plan is excellent. I wouldn't even change the nine A. No offense, working as the Fire Chief Emergency Manager in the past, I get the lingo, I get the understanding. I think we'd do the same, but I'm flexible.
And your name is?
Alderman Stunek?
Yes.
Bevins or Erickson, any questions or comments?
Bevins is fine.
Erickson?
Yeah, Alderman Erickson. I wanted to just express my, I was impressed as well with the strictness that got it together, and I thought it was very special and very comprehensive. No changes on my own. Thank you.
Do you have a motion? If you're ready. I'm ready. I'm moving to adopt the continuity of operations plan with the only addition on nine A, giving a chief government officer slash city. Yeah, a motion and a second to adopt the plan with the one change of adding city administrator. Any discussion?
Excellent job.
Alderman Stunek. During this whole other discussion, we'll ask...
Was seconded that motion?
Sorry, that was Alderman Bado.
Alderman Bado seconded?
Well, I actually did. That doesn't matter.
You got to say your name.
You don't know who you are. Still haven't identified yourself, sir. You're ignoring...
No.
Could be a rush.
All right, Bevins?
Yes.
Bado?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Motion carries unanimously. To the next item on the agenda, that is... Number four, Consider Stay-at-Home Plan.
Can I ask everybody on, can you hear me if I'm sitting here and speaking? Does everybody hear me? See who thumbs up.
Stunek, yes.
I'm going to turn my head. I'm going to turn my head. Can you hear me now? All right. All right. All right, so in your package, the next thing that we have spent a considerable amount of time working on for the last week is a stay-at-home work plan. As you know, the governor came out with executive order 2020 directing Minnesota to stay at home. I have attached the governor's executive order for your information. It is also available online in our agenda package. So we are recommending that almost every city staff person whose primary work is done on a computer, work from home. So we have a laptop or a tablet available for all of those staff, and they will be expected to work eight-hour day or forty-hour week for their normal working day. We will continue in the next two weeks under the governor's order to work from home. Those employees who are identified to work from home and continue our operations as best as we can. As we all know, this is new for all of us. Even just this council meeting, I think, is kind of an indication of how we're all trying to learn how to cope under this new, new normal, I think, that we have right now. So what I've asked every city department head to do is to think about projects that they would be able to do in a working-from-home environment. And so what I've asked, Mr. Chair, if you may, is just have each department head come on and just give you a minute to two minutes of what their department will be working on from home for the next two weeks. I do have them in alphabetical order, and I see our IT looking at me, so we will start with community development. David Chansky, Development Director.
Thank you. So the Community Development Department, per the governor's executive directive, both residential and commercial building trades are considered critical services, so they will continue. As such, building inspections will need to continue. My staff is prepared to do that, prepared to take in permits and process them from home. A building official is prepared to conduct building inspections. He actually left something on my desk for me to review, trying to do things as remotely as possible. So using things like FaceTime and Skype when he can for inspections and only going out for personal inspections when he has to. He will do either primary inspections. My husband Inspector Jason Stockinger will be his backup in case Darren should fall ill. In addition to conducting the regular permitting process, my staff will be doing a lot of reviewing the city code, both the building code, as well as the planning and zoning code, just reviewing it, making sure that they're bringing themselves, continuing up to date on what's in the code, doing reviews, updates to things like permit applications and informational brochures, making sure those are fully up to date, doing a lot of scanning. We're trying to get everything, especially with our new BSNA software, paperless. We've got a lot of paper documents that they're going to be doing. It's a lot of mental inspection documents they're going to be scanning, contractor licenses and unscanned permits. They're going to be scanning those, going through active permits, canceling out permits that have been, they've just been sitting there and haven't been acted on for over six months, or permits that have been finished but haven't been completed. Additionally, pretty much all Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of next week, we will be doing our pre-go live training with BSNA for the community development section of the software. So we will be doing much of our, devoting much of our time next week to that. Myself, I'll be spending a good amount of my time continuing working remotely with Ashley Kaiserschau with Sourcewell on a comprehensive plan implementation, as well as our LCC MR submittal for the Mississippi Land and Trailhead. We do have a plan on having a draft and a request before the city council on April 6th, as well as developing an action plan for the zoning code update, and then beginning research and drafting a revitalization plan for eating COVID-19 economic recovery in Brainerd.
So next, in your report, is engineering, and so city engineer Paul Sandy will give you an update. Paul, if I could ask you to, you've transited to the end of your presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Thank you, President, and members of the council. So part of my work and experience consisting of, or two things, the assistant in active plan development, that includes working in AutoCAD through remote desktop to finish up the plan sets, get review done by MINDOT, and continue in that process, along with the assistant city engineer developing our contracts and specifications for the 2020 construction projects. Through this time, we'll also be uploading all of our documents into our online bidding software, and if this order goes longer than what we're anticipating, we'll be doing an online, well, we would do an online bid opening anyways, but online bid opening would have to be a little different than what we've done in the past. We also have our seal coat, crack sealing, and large patching program that we will also be trying to formulate from home, so it'll be a little more difficult, but like I told my staff, it's, it'll be an interesting time for sure. As far as our street and sewer departments, being that they do not have the capability or means to work from home, our recommendation here tonight is to, for all those street department employees to be sent home. They would be dispatched anytime during normal workdays for emergency purposes. Outside of those normal work hours of seven to 3:30, emergency response will follow our existing call-out procedures as defined in the union contract. Emergency situations would entail sewer backups, potholes, sinkholes, one-call locate tickets, trees brushing the street, or any other transportation or utility, public safety issue. As far as our transit department is concerned, we would continue operating the transit system consisting of our Brainerd and Baxter, Crow Wing County, and Pine River bus system. Our transit director and his assistant would be working from home. We have communicated with our third-party contractor, and they have staff to continue the transit system, this shelter and play order. So we anticipate that, or we're recommending that we do continue the transit service during this time. MINDOT has indicated to us that the continuation of transit operations is a local decision, and you can see below that our staff recommendation tonight, as part of one of the motions, is to continue transit during this time for transit-dependent population within Brainerd, Baxter, and Crow Wing County. That's all I had.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions?
So, Mr. Chair, next, and members of the council, next is our finance department. So I would ask Finance Director Holman, she would consent on what finance?
I'll back the order by...
Yeah. I always want to know your chances of standing.
By department, sorry.
My middle name.
Yeah.
Hello, members of the council, this is Finance Director Connie Hillman. As you know, we're in the middle of implementing the new software, and so we are still doing training and implementing and setup remotely via WebEx with our trainer who's in Michigan. And we will continue to work on that in the next two weeks. Next week is our first live payroll in the system. We will also continue to process bills, pay employees, and work on audit preparation. That is it.
Thank you, Connie. When is our audit coming up? When is that coming up?
Fieldwork, the first work of fieldwork is scheduled for the end of April. However, it will probably all be done remotely this year.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman of the council, next is our HR Director Schubert to talk about what HR will be working on from home the next week.
Good evening, members of the council. I am a one-person department, so things that I will be working on is continuing the hiring processes for our twenty-some positions that we currently have listed on our city website. I will be organizing or trying to organize in FaceTime interviews for those applicants that we are going to interview. We also hope to complete the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Salary Survey, and then also the city of Fergus Falls has asked us to do a salary survey as well. Both of those take a lot of time, and I maintain a to-do list, which I never seem to touch. So I'm hoping that during this time, I might be able to tackle some of those projects as well.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And then next is John Strong, our IT Director, will talk about what IT will be working on for the next week.
Cut it off. Yes. IT will be working diligently to make all of the lawless things do happen, or sorry, possible. I will be doing the work. I will be making the work possible. Keeping the network running, warning everybody who's going to take a device home for the first day, turn it on on Monday morning and call us. Obviously, help the PD in any way we can remotely. Working, always squad card, video, body cam. And then, of course, to be a today's software, still taking up ninety percent of Lori's time, which would be that. Try to keep it running.
All right, and then next, Parks Director Saylor. Tony, if you can update us or the council on what parks will be working on for the next week. Tony, if you, if you're muted, you want to mute?
Oh, he has no audio.
Got it. Is he chatting with us? I have no audio. This is your chair, members of the council. I would just share with you, and I'm a metal, that Tony does have a list of a number of things that he and his staff will be working on, ordering program uniforms, proofreading designs, communicating with our summer closes, PDF sharing meeting, required certification, program criteria and packet creation for our recades, creating schedules for adult softball. We hope that at least we'll maybe have a fall softball, and not giving up hope yet on summer. And then to develop a plan to start up programs sometime in mid-May, and then emailing past participants to remind them to register, watch online registrations, and send confirmation emails. Complete pools and brackets for five-state baseball qualifiers, and respond to calls and emails as needed. Our administrative specialists will be taking home files and new file folders to better organize for an anticipated move to City Hall. As you know, our Parks Department is going to be moving from the Parks Department to City Hall this fall, so I think there's a lot of work that's still to be done. Maintenance is another one that we'll be talking about a little bit later, our park maintenance side. So right now, we anticipate that they will not have the ability to work from home as much of their work is done outside, but would be available for garbage pickup in the parks, at least once a week, restocking our mud mits at Busker Park and other parks as needed, cleaning graffiti. I know that Park Director Saylor has anticipated with kids out of school, he's concerned about graffiti, so that would be something also our parks would be...
It'd be a beautiful week without spring.
So, so, Mr. Chair, and members of the council, if you notice, police and fire really aren't listed in here individually. Chief McQuiston does have a report in your packet on what the police department will do, will be doing, and Chief Holmes also has information on what the fire department will be doing. It is very clear in the executive order of the governor that police and fire are quote-unquote essential, or what we like to refer as critical. And so with that, Chief McQuiston, if you want to share with the council what the plan is? Nothing, Chief? You've got nothing?
We can't hear you.
He does have a written report. You know, Chief, do you want me to call you and put you on speakerphone?
He might be one of the callers. He might be sixteen. He was the...
He might be sixteen. He was the.
Oh.
Corky. Corky, you want to say something? No, that's not it.
I'm hanging up and re dial.
Is that you?
Those are a lot of words.
You know what? While, while we figure that out, uh, Chief Holmes, are you there?
Yep.
All right, you're up.
So as Jennifer mentioned, um, the executive order explicitly exempts the fire department, um, from, from working. Um, so we will continue to, you know, do our part and try to slow the spread of the COVID nineteen. As far as myself and the Fire Marshal and Deputy Chief, uh, will continue to maintain normal operations uh, with a potential of a slight scheduling change to limit the overlap of both Dave and I in the office. Um, we continue to, uh, respond to calls and feel that if this, uh, continues to grow as, as we expect it will, um, we'll be asked to help out more, um, within the community. Uh, we continue to respond to all emergencies, uh, maintain the operational readiness of the department. Uh, continue to monitor the COVID nineteen and determine the effects on both police and fire and EMS. Uh, I continue to stay in constant contact with both, uh, North Am Goods and Essentia Health Systems. Uh, making sure as the director for the city that they have their needs met and have the resources that they're looking for from us, the county and also the state. Um, working closely with John Bowen at Crow Wing County Emergency Management as, um, they have partially opened their emergency operations center. Um, and can, are continuing to work on, um, supplying, um, us with personal protective equipment along with the police department. Again, working closely with Chief McQuiston on needs that the fire department and we have as it relates to, um, personal protective equipment, um, for both our police officers and, and our fire department. Um, and then just, we continue to support the continuity of operations plan for both the city and BPU. Um, BPU was a, uh, big factor in, in the plan. So we continue to work through that. Um, our fire administrative specialist will continue to work on, um, our national fire reporting. Um, she's working on several grants, both managing them and with some open, uh, applications that we have right now. Um, continue to work with payroll, uh, AP and some timekeeping stuff. Um, she will be participating in some of the BSNA training as it comes out in the next couple of weeks. And then she will be working on some open projects that, um, again, like a few others have mentioned that we just don't have, haven't had time to get to. So this will be a good opportunity with some quiet time at home without the phone ringing as much to get some of those projects, uh, done.
Thank you, Tim. Chief McQuiston, are you there? Do you want to say something? I can hear you on the phone. I'm going to put you on, okay? Chief, you're on the speaker.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm not sure why this worked great earlier today and doesn't want to work now. So, um, you know, I'll, I'll try and keep it short then. Um, if you have any questions regarding my memo, um, it'd probably be easiest to address that, but I think you can see, um, through reading through it. My, my biggest concern is the police department trying to maintain a healthy workforce through this pandemic event. I think that's the biggest concern or the biggest priority that I have. I mean, if you take into consideration that we're already five or six people short, um, so we're entering this thing, um, kind of, uh, with a handicap already. So that was my goal is, is to look at is what can we do to reduce or mitigate the exposure of the, the police force? Um, and that's where we came up with this changing our schedule. Um, we've done what we can with the resources we have to try and facilitate our record staff to work at home. Um, and I think we're going to, you know, try that the first couple of weeks. I think there's some exemption in the CISA guidelines when you look at how they define law enforcement that we would be able to bring them back. But I think if you, you look at what's stressed in the governor's order, I mean, it, it does require that all employees who can work from home to do so, even if they are eligible for a critical sector work exemption. So I, I think that's what we need to try to start doing. Um, and I look at, I'm not trying to minimize anything anybody else does, but I think the, the police officers probably pose the greatest risk of all city employees of, um, getting exposed to the virus. So anything we can do to mitigate that now and, uh, push that out, I think it is really critical for just to continue to provide continuity in the police services to the community.
Thanks, Corky. I have one question. I've had a few people ask me already. If you're a non-essential employee and you're driving around, is the Brainerd Police going to pull people over and ask them for their papers?
No, we've actually had a lot of emails and a lot of questions. Um, people are looking for us to issue them some kind of letters or passes or things that that's not our job at all. I mean, I think our job is going to be is if we identify, you know, somebody makes a complaint or we foresee a problem, but that's not going to be a primary function whatsoever. The police officers is to try and figure out, you know, who is, um, as it's defined by the thing as a critical sector worker or who's not. Um, unless, you know, we start to, I, I think realize that it's a problem and there's a lot of people who aren't who are out and about.
You won't be pulling people over on their beer run, asking them why they're out and about. That won't be a priority.
Nope, not this time.
Okay, thank you. I think about the only place that has something like that in effect is United States. Well, you can go hunting, fishing.
Yeah, pleasure driving and get out of a hollis.
Any other questions of Corky while we've done the poll? Thanks, Corky.
Thanks, Corky. Don't worry. Thanks, bye. So Mr. Chair, Members of the Council, I give you, uh, kind of an overview of what we've been planning for the last week and a half. Um, we started planning this last Tuesday when we anticipated that the governor may at some point do a shelter in place or a stay at home plan. Of course, at the time we were planning, had no idea what that plan was. We didn't know when that plan would be effective, ineffective. We didn't know how long it would be in effect. So there were many variables that we knew that we just wouldn't, wouldn't be able to come to any kind of recommendation for the council until we had the actual order. Um, so as you know, the governor did sign this order yesterday in, in Melrose Conference yesterday at two o'clock and by three o'clock, we started putting together this plan and it based on some parameters. Alderman Bridget, I know you were there.
I think you're covering it well. I mean, the amount of work that went into it and all the different aspects that were looked at, uh, was quite adept.
With that, um, attached in your packet is the City of Brainerd's COVID nineteen work from home plan. So just to give a little bit of background, so the City of Brainerd has a total of a hundred and five employees. We have sixty-six full time, we have four part time, and we have thirty-five paid on call firefighters. Of that hundred and five, as you heard both from the police department and the fire department, sixty of those positions are deemed quote unquote essential or critical, uh, based on the governor's order. Um, and those employees that must remain on the job by the governor's order are twenty-three sworn full time firefighters of the police department and our thirty-five paid on call firefighters. So the order does not restrict virtual work or telework. And in fact, the order actually encourages Minnesotans to consider telework options in any field from their home or their residence. So we spent a lot of time looking through all of our staff and we were able to identify, um, and accommodate twenty-four individuals who are able to be issued and take home city equipment. Um, to, to be able to work once approved by their supervisor. I have to say that Sean and Lori have spent a considerable amount of time in the last week taking every single one of our laptops, every single one of our cameras, making sure that they were all current and up to date, making sure that we were protected, um, finding ways that we could log in to work and to make sure that we wouldn't ultimately bring any viruses back to the city and really cause problems for our network. So thank you to Sean and Lori for the amount of work that they've done. It really has been an overwhelming amount of work. Um, so at the time, um, at this time, we've identified twenty-one employees who we believe are able to work from home. Um, who I'm sorry, who are not able to work from home. Let me step back. We've identified twenty-four individuals who we believe are able to work from home and we believe that we have the equipment available. We have also identified twenty-one employees who are unable to work from home at this time. These include our maintenance crews in our streets and parks department, four of our police records management staff and four part time CSOs or our community service officers. Although not able to work from home, we believe that, um, all of these employees need to have available to work when needed. So although the order includes public works and outdoor activities as exempt, it simply references specific circumstances. So while we believe it's necessary to have our streets department and our parks being available as needed, they would not have the ability to work from home. Also, when we're looking at the police department and those who are, we're saying right now are not able to work. Um, our poor records management staff, right now we do not have the equipment to be able to deploy to them because there's all kinds of additional protections. Sean could probably give you more details than you'd ever want to know. Um, but our IT staff is looking at, looking at options, looking at ways that we may be able to deploy devices to those for record handling. And then our CSO, um, the chief has said that the CSOs are, are really important when it comes to things like traffic jams. And so he would like to be able to call in those CSOs. So on March twenty-fourth, um, BPU, the Brainerd Public Utilities, uh, did authorize paying all of their employees, whether they are reported to work, working from home or unable to work from home. So consistent with BPU's commission act action, we're asking that the, we're recommending to the city council that we would also continue to pay those employees that we have, the twenty-one that have been identified who are unable to work from home. So you do have an attachment, a spreadsheet that goes through every single one of the city employees. And we categorize them as essential employees who must remain on the job for the governor's order. The teleworking, teleworking employees and then the employees who are unable to work from home. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer.
Question?
This room. Rick? Alderman Stunek?
What?
You have any questions?
I didn't hear the, I have no questions. I'm good.
Alderman Bevins?
Bevins is okay.
Alderman Erickson?
I'm, I'm good as well. Thank you.
Ready for a moment?
Chair Lambert, I'll make the motion. Sorry, I'm sorry. Can I?
Thank you.
Yes, okay. I make the motion. Stay at home plan as presented.
Bridget, second. We have a motion by Lambert, second by Bridget, since that recommendation to adopt this plan. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? During no discussion, we will vote by one call.
Bevins?
Bevins is yes.
Bedo?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson, yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Stunek is a yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Johnson is a yes. That's unanimous.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we did have one more motion, um, as Paul mentioned, um, transit and the operations of transit is a local decision. So we are asking that the council consider authorizing all transit operations to continue to operate during the timeframe identified in the governor of the Emergency Executive Order twenty twenty and direct staff to reduce the capacity appropriately to reduce ridership during the pandemic.
No, some of, Bridget, second. We have a motion by Bedo and a second by Bridget, which, uh, authorize the public transit recommendation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, it's Alderman Erickson. I did have one question for, uh, did you call, is that a question? Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. I did receive a couple of calls. They are concerned about the fact that the buses are still running. I just wanted a clarification, um, you know, given the social distancing guidelines or requirements now, uh, is that going to be an issue or is there a measure to take into limit providers? How is that being handled?
Mr. Chair, so Alderman Erickson, I just want to see if I heard what you were asking. I think what you were asking is that if the buses continue to run, are we still able to meet the requirements of social distancing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President, Members of the Council. Um, in my personal opinion, I think that the buses have enough room and with the decreased ridership that we've been seeing, the buses aren't running full. Um, transit dependent populations really depend on this service. And so I think, um, I'm going to work on protecting the transit. Here to put notices in the bus. Press to the maximum extent, um, extent that we can, um, when riding the transit service. And the, uh, third party contractor is also, uh, working on sanitation protocol, uh, for, uh, after each, uh, shift or when there's downtime. Um, so we are addressing both of those issues and, uh, will continue to, um, if authorized tonight, continue to run transit for those populations that it is, um, um, uh, necessary for.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I have also received calls from, um, people concerned about public transit. And I'm wondering, Paul, is there a way that we can get sanitized in a bus? Then they can get, you know, everybody getting their hand sanitizers? Is there a way we can get that on a bus that people feel like it washed their hands, uh, after they leave or something like that? You hear me?
Do you repeat the question, please?
I, I, is there a way that we could mount some sanitizers, hand sanitizers on the bus? That would help some people to be, uh, have a more relief on doing that? Is there a way we can do that?
Yes, thank you, Alderwoman Lambert. Um, it really, I, I'd have to do some research here tomorrow. Um, it'd really be dependent on what the supply of hand sanitizer is. Um, I, I don't. I don't know if stores and things have been able to restock those items since this whole thing started. So it'd really be dependent on what we could come up with. I can certainly bring that back to transit staff and the third-party contractor to see if they can track something down of that nature that we could use for the two weeks at least.
Thank you.
Any other question on the motion? There are none, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Bevins, yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Erickson?
None.
Lambert, yes.
Stunek?
Stunek, yes.
Bridgette?
Bridgette, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes, motion carries. Next up, is a discussion on the next steps. Well, I talked to Jennifer this afternoon, and I've heard some concerns from people in town about, are we going to still be giving out parking? Or could we remediate the 12-hour parking requirement for citizens who live downtown for the time being? I had bar owners concerned on why are they going to have to pay for 12 months a license when they're only going to be operating for 10 months? And furthermore, they'll be paying their license in May after having maybe not been open for two months. So could we put their payment off until September? Or there are a number of things we need to look at, those are two of them I've had brought up, and I think we're going to have some of those items on the table. Jennifer?
So, Mr. Chair, members of the council, what we're doing is we're looking at every license and every deed that we have at the city. So our department heads are just really taking a look at that, and our thought was that we would put together a summary that can be brought to you on April 6th, so that you can be looking at everything and then making those decisions when you have all of our licenses.
I think that's good because for people who are in the business to begin with a big bill, or maybe they're even open again, it'd really be devastating. And I know there are some very worried businesses downtown about if they ever will reopen.
Parking tickets. I think, myself, or the council president, had mandates of public enforcement for a certain part of time, not issued parking tickets to the city for legal parking, which some county has. A lot of people that are living downtown.
Bevins can't hear Mink.
Bevins can't hear him.
Okay, on parking tickets downtown, there's a lot of people that are worried about getting parking downtown. They're unemployed at this point, living downtown, and they might get tickets. I would, I believe, myself, or the council president, can make an executive order to not ticket. But I would rather see the council make that order during this duration of shutdown. Now, that is a big issue for some people. I would also like, if we do that, I would like to have a paper written up that we can put under the windshields of the vehicles down there saying, currently, your tickets are not being issued for parking there, but as of such and such a day, they will be, and please park in the parking lots during this time, alleviate parking on the street for emergency vehicle traffic as needed. We've got a lot of people that are probably cooking at home that don't, I'm just worried about more requires.
Mr. Chair, we do have Attorney Langle joining us via conference call, or via video. I don't know if our attorney is on.
So, your thoughts on the parking ticket?
Well, my understanding, Mr. President and Council, my understanding is that the ticket, or the regulation rather, for that zone is the city ordinance. So if the council wishes to put that ordinance in abeyance for a certain time, I would like to see it as a council action. We could do it as sort of an interim ordinance type thing, and then, you know, whenever this situation passes, we can just restore it back to the way it is now. It's not a difficult thing to do if the council wants to do it that way.
How would that motion sound?
It would be better, frankly, as an ordinance, to be honest, because what you're doing is, well, let me take it back. You can do it as an ordinance. Right now, you've got, if I remember correctly, in your emergency declaration, it talked about suspending ordinances. That's a little bit grayer since that is not an emergency, you know, issue necessarily. You could do it underneath that somewhat gray authority. I'd prefer that it was an actual ordinance, that it was done that way. Your problem with that is under the charter, if I remember correctly, you've got a two reading type deal, so you've got a delay going on. In the interim, this could just simply be a police enforcement issue, and I think we had a conversation with Chief McQuiston about that as well, that, you know, until the ordinance is changed, they're simply not going to enforce that ordinance, that parking ordinance in the downtown area. We just have to be very clear as to where that is, and maybe it is clear to people, but where that zone is, where the parking restrictions are being lifted and so forth, so people understand that it's not just a free-for-all all over town, that there are no parking regulations anymore. As long as they have that clear, I think we're fine. So, I guess there's three things. One, that the police can stop, loosen up their enforcement until the ordinance is done, we can do the ordinance, because frankly, we might be going on for months with this, whether we like it or not. Or we simply do it by motion to suspend the, I think it's the two-hour parking restrictions during business hours in the downtown business zone.
This is Finance Director Hillman.
Tony?
Police Chief McQuiston doesn't have volume, but he did let us know that the police department would support passing a temporary exemption for two-hour parking enforcement downtown. He said that they support this, as they won't have the staff to enforce the two-hour parking requirement.
So I guess we take care of that. I think the motion will sound something like directing the police department to move the priority. Somebody else can give it a better shot. Make more. Or pardon.
Lambert?
Excuse me, this is Finance Director Hillman. Again, relaying a message for Corky. He said, "We would only be concerned with abandoned or junk vehicles that the state statute gives us the authority to tow after 48 hours."
So, here, like a lot of where it's like, law enforcement, enforcement for, for downtown, the exception of abandoned. Junk cars, or, something like that.
Can the motion be restated, please? It was a little choppy.
Second. Bevins? Jennifer, what do you have written down?
So the motion I have written down is to direct law enforcement to not enforce the two-hour parking in the B4 district, with the exception of abandoned or junk vehicles.
I think that's accurate, that's fine, as written, unless Corky's got some change to it.
Corky's giving a thumbs up.
Mr. President, Erickson?
Junk cars, working operable.
And if they're not operable is what he said. Abandoned could be an operative.
So the change in the motion is to remove junk and put in inoperable. Add it.
Junk in it.
Abandoned junk.
Anything that falls under a different statute? Mr. President, Erickson?
Erickson? I just think that's adding the word temporary and/or previous duration of the coronavirus strike, one of the two, just a time component.
Yeah. So should we go until May 1st?
Yeah.
Or the first Monday in May, which is the main?
Tie it to the executive.
What is the first Monday?
Okay, so let's revisit it at the May 4th.
I agree with that.
Yes. Alderman Stunek? Alderman Bevins?
Stunek, yes. Bevins?
During no other discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Bevins, yes.
Bevins?
Bevins, yes.
Erickson? Lambert?
Yes.
Stunek?
Stunek, yes.
Bridgette?
Bridgette, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. So we are going to have, we're going to need a timeline of payment on those, and we have a conference to list what the fees are, when they're due, and who is being negatively affected by. And legality will have to run in by Joe to see what we can do with some of the legislation that's paid.
Speed?
Ed Mack, on the liquor license, can I make a recommendation? Lumpstick for the first three months, and then a lump stump, I mean, the end of the third month, or the balance of the year, once they're able to reopen.
So anything else to come before tonight, Jan?
Mr. Chair?
The question is, did everybody get an email today from Chuck Merrell?
Jan, Dave Bevins, and Dave Johnson received. But I think it's a good point.
Yes, and Chuck, when his question is, received some information from somebody in West Poughkeepsie, pardon me, and most of the businesses that are applying for these to help are corporates. So he was asking if there's a way that, pardon me, the city can get out some information where people can start applying for that, and there was a very nice, I can't get it up here right now, a nice package that shows if you're an employer, employee, or if you are.
For me? I do know that the Chamber and Blade have already been sending out similar information. We can, I can certainly put something together, but I do know that there are entities who are kind of already spearheading that.
Okay. Which is good, but David, could you talk to Tyler and see if Blade is, or if they are willing to physically, literally sit down and help fill out these applications? Because the concern we, that Chuck Merrell shared with us, is it's the big corporate entities that have offices full of camera footers, know how to fill out these forms, where our soap manufacturers downtown Brainerd may not have the skills.
I absolutely can do that, and if one of you would be, could forward me that email just so I know everything that Chuck said, I would appreciate that.
I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you.
One email. Anybody else to come up tonight?
As you know, the last.
And I move.
As you know, the 31st is my stated resignation day. If the council feels it necessary, till they have a mayor in place to have me continue, I would be willing to, but it would be strictly a temporary until the council has someone in place, but that is up to the council's decision. I'm just offering it so that you can make a decision. Thank you.
Stunek, that's an excellent idea.
Is that a motion?
I can do that. I'll make a motion that we continue to let Mayor Mink run out his term until we appoint a new one.
Edward, second.
Chair, you have 20 points.
Yeah.
We have a motion, and a second by Stunek and Lambert.
Two mayoral duties until the council builds.
Mayoral duties. Still, it's placing is winking. Is there any discussion? There are none, we'll vote by roll call.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Erickson? Erickson?
Lambert, yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Bridgette, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes, that motion carries. We don't have the enable six. We know you're on leave.
You're trying to make toad right now.
Yeah.
Anything else? Jennifer?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, thank you. I know this was a challenging first meeting. We anticipated that we would have some bugs that we were going to need to work out. For our meeting on April 6th, we will all be joining via WebEx video conferencing. So it is our intention to have a trial run on April 3rd, and then be prepared to go live on WebEx with all of us video conferencing. So I just wanted to share that, and also thank you again for your patience, and thanks to everybody that has joined us either on the call or video for your.
On top of that, I wanted Jennifer for doing such a fantastic job the last couple of weeks, and all the hard work, pulling together all of this stuff. It's a challenging time for everybody. We're concerned about our health, we're concerned about our families, we're concerned about their jobs, and the stress of trying to pull all this together on top of doing what your actual jobs are, really commendable, and I just want to say, everybody did a really good job, really proud of the city of Brainerd.
My question is.
So the question from Alderwoman Lambert was, is it better to call in on the video, or is it better to call in on your phone?
We will know that answer six months from now. We've done this 10 times. Audio is going to be better on the phone. If you have a new one on your phone, probably your best at good quality audio. I think we want to see you too, so I consider listening in, WebEx, on there, see if you can put it on, and then calling it. Unless you know you're giving a fairly quiet room, you just surface, then use your camera and your mic on your surface. Unless you want to unmute yourself, you're not talking, can be done with just surf. Really well. Optimum phone call, your audio call, and now you want to call. You know what?
So the question?
Number by then, the free trial, I'll give you the old free number, but.
So the question was whether it's your landline or your cell phone, and what our IT director just said is that we are purchasing licenses so that we will have a 1-800 number for people to call in.
I would prefer a cell phone, because while we can mute, people call in, I don't expect or want to have to mute any council members. I kind of want council members always have full access to the audio. If you're on your home phone that can't be muted, and it starts getting noisy in your house, I want you to just go on cell phone to mute. And I want to apologize to everyone in advance, I have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, there's a white group in my house. We'll be doing that. It's called Ben and Phil.
If I may add, we will be handing out special awards for background, so get ready.
Oh, I love it. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So, Prichet?
I've got a model. All days are good days. Some days are better, better days are coming. With that, that's what I would like to leave this with tonight.
Thank you, Ben. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Prichet? Motion by Prichet, second by Lambert. We'll call a vote.
Oh, Bevins?
Yes.
Fado?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Lambert, yes. Stunich?
Yes.
Prichet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, for adjourn.
Thanks, everyone.
It's real background. It could be... I know, I'm tired of that.